Dennis Hillborne here.
All right, well, if you're ready, Diana, it's 6:30, so I'm gonna go ahead and open. Good evening, I'd like to call the order, the city has us planning his own commission meeting, the date is Monday, October 26, 2020, the time is 6:30 PM. And we do have a quorum present, we'll do roll call by voice since we are performing this meeting by teleconference, and so we will identify each of the attendees. This is Greg Caddis speaking, Chairman of Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Wallach in attendance.
President.
Mr. McCusson.
Here.
Mr. Flaxbark. Not present. Mrs. Snidicker. Not present. Mr. Hillborne.
Here.
And Greg Caddis is present. Okay, so we do have a quorum. We'll begin with administration of oath of office. So place two would be for Ms. Snidicker, who is not present, and place six would be for Mr. Flaxbark, who is not present. But place four, Mr. Wallach, is present, so we'll go ahead and administer the oath of office for Mr. Wallach.
And Mr. Wallach, this is Diana Buchanan. I did include the statement of officer and oath of office in the packet, and if you could just read those.
I, Paul Wallach, solemnly affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, or promised any public office or employment as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation thereof, so help me God. And the oath of office. I, Paul Wallach, do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of place four of the Hazlet Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Hazlet, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
All right, sir, thank you, we really appreciate your service, and Tara, I would say that if Ms. Snidicker or Mr. Flaxbark come on the line later at the end of the meeting, we could administer those to them, so. That Mr. Flaxbark was in, for sure was gonna be on the call, so he may just be running late, thank you.
Okay, if I forget, please remind me to do that at the end, thank you. Okay, moving on, items of community interest, a couple of items here, first, we'd like to introduce our new Hazlet Planning and Development Director, Mr. Wes Morrison, Mr. Morrison, we certainly give you a big extended welcome to our first planning zoning commission meeting with your attendance and look forward to working with you, so. I know, I know you haven't had a chance to meet any of us by face, but we're all looking forward to doing that soon someday.
Thank you very much, looking forward to meeting you all.
Moving on, we got early voting that was gonna continue through this Friday, the 30th, the Voting Center for both the early and Election Day voting on November 3rd is at the Hazlet, the former Hazlet Elementary School on 501 Schoolhouse Road. And there is a Hazlet proposition on the ballot to reauthorize a quarter percent sales tax for street maintenance and repairs. There's more information on that available in the packets that we received, and later in the month of November, offices, city offices are gonna be closed, November 26th to the 28th, and that will be in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Any additional comments on items of community interest? All right, moving on, we've got two sets of minutes that we need to review and make motions on, so the first is our planning and zoning commission meetings from our regular September 28th meeting. And that is Agenda Item 3A. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve, or if we have modifications or changes to those minutes, please express those.
I'll make a motion, this is Jim Markison, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented.
There's been a motion to approve, is there a second?
Oh, well.
Dennis, I'll second it.
Either one.
All right, I think I heard Paul first, so most of it's made, and there's been a second, so just go down the list, Mr. Wallach. Okay, Mr. Markison.
Approve.
And Mr. Hillborne.
Approve.
And Greg isn't mine as well. Okay, moving on to, and the motion passes, moving on to Agenda Item 3B, this is our meeting minutes from our special meeting that was held on October 6, 2020. And if there are no amendments to those minutes, if they're, get a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Oh, Jim is, oh, Paul, okay. Mr. Wallach made a motion to approve, is there a second?
This is Jim Markison, I'll second it.
It's been second of them, and so let's go down the list, Paul.
Approve.
Jim.
Approve.
Dennis.
Approve.
And Greg isn't mine as well, so motion passes. Moving on, Agenda Item 4A, hold a public hearing, discuss and consider an act on a recommendation regarding the final plat of Lot 1, Block 1, Hazlet Middle School Edition. The proposed plat is in the Coleman Boyd Survey Abstract Number 225 in the City of Hazlet, Tarrant County, Texas, and located on the east side, the John Day Road and the south side of Avondale Hazlet Road, the subject property is in the Agricultural AG Zoning District, and we'll begin with our staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members, this is a final plat you have before you. The site plan, which I know you've seen before, was approved by City Council last week at their regular meeting. Engineering plans were submitted and reviewed, and the plat meets all the requirements of state and local ordinances, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, and is the applicant present this evening?
Yes, this is Mike Wilson with Tignall and Perkins.
Okay, is there any additional information you would like to present this evening?
Nothing more than Wes has said, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great, thank you for attending the meeting this evening. So we'll open the public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 4A? Hey, recognizing no one spoke during the opportunity of the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move it on to discussion, are there any questions for either the applicant or city staff regarding Agenda Item 4A? Mr. Morrison, I had a, I do have one question, and it's let's see, I'm gonna get the exhibit name here, it's page 19 of 74 in our packet. And it's the final plat drawing dated 9/14/2020. There's a reference to Denton County on here, and the subject property is, isn't it located in Tarrant County?
Uh, yeah, I believe you're correct, I'm gonna have to look and see, that may just be a graphical error that we can easily fix.
And it's, I see this referenced on the right side of the exhibit where it says Lot 1, Block 1, Hazlet Middle School Edition, an addition of the City of Hazlet, Tarrant County, Texas, and hereby dedicated, so on, so on, so on. And then below that, it says State of Texas County Denton.
That might be then where the the surveyor has their, it may have just been something the surveyor put on there, but we'll, we'll look into that and get, that's an easy fix.
Okay.
Where do you see that, Greg?
If you look at, if you look on the first, actually, it's the second page inside the, in our packet, so it would be page 19 of 74. So you got the city staff letter, then you've got the first exhibit, which is the area map. And then the next exhibit is the plat drawing. And on that plat drawing, it's in the lower right-hand corner.
Are you looking at the notary block there?
I don't know if that's a notary block or what that is. I just see, I saw.
Yeah, that's the notary.
Notary block.
And that's, they're gonna execute that in Denton County because that's where the school district headquarters are located.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, is if not, how about a motion, anybody got a motion they wanna make? You've got a really good recommendation right here in front of us.
This is Jim Markison, I'll make a a move that we approve the final plat of Lot 1, Block 1, Hazlet Middle School Edition.
Thank you, Jim, is there a second?
This is Dennis, I'll second it.
Seconded by Dennis, do a vote, Paul.
Hi.
Jim.
Approve.
Dennis.
Yes.
And Greg isn't mine, motion passes, thank you. Moving on, Agenda Item 4B. Hold a public hearing, discuss, consider an act on a recommendation regarding the replat of Lot 1, Block 1, A, the Sea Valley Transportation Edition, and an additional approximately 1.37 acres into Lot 1R Block A, the Sea Valley Transportation Edition, the proposed replat is in the B, the Voya Survey Abstract Number 991, in the City of Hazlet, Texas, and is located on the south side of Westport Parkway, west of Harmon Road, the subject property is in the I Industrial Zoning District with the Alliance Airport Overlay AAO. And we'll begin with our staff presentation, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members, this is a replat of the 21 acres. One variance has already been approved on this property for the sidewalk or budding Westport Parkway. With this application, the applicant's asking for an additional variance for the sidewalk abutting Harmon Road. The, as you all know, when you're looking at determining if variances are approved or not, there are three things that you've gotta look at. One, if there are any special conditions affecting the lands involved that would prohibit the requirement being requested a variance of. Second one being the effect of granting the variance on the public health, safety, and welfare of the property. And then the third one is the effect of granting the variance will prevent orderly use or development of other land or tracks in the area. Based on the fact that the requirement to install the sidewalk along the front of the property is not roughly proportionate to the domain created by the proposed development, staff recommends approval of the variance being requested along Harmon Road. City engineers reviewed the TIA and agrees with the conclusions presented in that document. And staff recommends approval of the request with the variance, with the variance approved, staff finds that the plat meets all the state and local requirements, I can answer any questions you have.
Okay, is the applicant present this evening?
Uh, yes, this is Dave Crystal with ARCO. Working on behalf of the developer.
Okay, is there any additional information you'd like to share with the commission this evening?
Um, I don't believe so, I sent over a few renderings of the proposed building to Travis. I'm not sure, I'm having a hard time opening the PDF, but I believe it might have made its way in there.
Yeah, it did, we'll pick that up under 4C.
Ah, gotcha, getting ahead of myself, okay, then, uh, no, I think you guys covered all the bases then.
All right, thank you, okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 4B?
Why can't I hear him?
I think somebody's having some problems with their meeting. They just heard somebody say, why can't they hear us?
Well, we just need to remind everyone that if you're not speaking, you need to be muted, please.
Okay, again, I will open the public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 4B? Okay, recognizing no one spoke during the opportunity during the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing, we'll move it on to discussion. And does any of the commission members have any questions for you, the applicant or the city staff? So where does the 1.37 acres, where does that get picked up that wasn't part of the original?
Sorry.
Yes, so that's the little finger out to Westport Parkway, where they're gonna be attached, where the detention pond is going to be. So the original plat was just a square, and then the replat is including that little finger out to Westport Parkway.
Does, so does that finger include a drive to Westport Parkway, is it just the, for retention?
Just for retention, the drives will come off of Harmon Road.
Thank you. All right, so I do have some edits that need to be made to the exhibit that's included in here, the plat drawing. So in several instances on this document, as well as the documents in 4C, Westport Parkway is not properly identified, in some cases, it's just referred to as Westport Park. Other, in other instances, it's referred to as Westport Park, separate word away. So we should seek to get those things edited and you know, fixed appropriately before it goes to city council, if this were to be approved.
Yeah, we'll make sure that gets revised accordingly, sorry about that.
Yeah, probably the one that's the least detectable is on the, it's dead center of the plat drawing. On page 23, it's on the, I guess if you're looking at the document, it'd be the left-hand side. In very small text, it says Lot 1 Block 4, Westport Park. That was probably the least detectable of those. And actually, that, it's the same error is repeated down at the bottom of the drawing on the left-hand side as well, so several places where that needs to get corrected, both in Agenda Item 4, 4B and C. And I don't have any other questions, anybody else have any questions, comments, or edits that they feel are necessary? Okay, if not, is there a motion, and if somebody makes a motion, maybe I reference the fact that we need to get Westport Parkway appropriately identified in the documents. Okay, well, then I'll make a motion. I move we approve the replat of Lot 1, Block 1, the Sea Valley Transportation Edition, and the additional approximate 1.37 acres into Lot 1 R Block A, the Sea Valley Transportation Edition, and the variance to Section 3.9 Sidewalk and Shared Use Pass, and that all exhibits be appropriately updated to reflect Westport Parkway to the appropriate name. Is there a second?
Yeah, Paul Wallach, I'll second it.
Second, do a vote, Paul.
Hi.
Jim.
Approve.
Dennis.
Yes.
And Greg is an approval as well, the motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 4C. Hold a public hearing, discuss, consider an act on a request for approval of a site plan on Lot 1R Block A, the Sea Valley Transportation Subdivision, which is in the, is in an approximate 21.317 acre parcel in the I Industrial Zoning District with the Alliance Airport Overlay AAO located on the west side of Harmon Road and the south side of Westport Parkway. We'll begin with our staff presentation, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members, this is a sidewalk, obviously, just approved the recommended approval of the replat that also had the two variances on Westport Parkway and Harmon Road for the sidewalk. The site plan is for a truck terminal facility. Staff reviewed the site plan and all associated pages and finds it meets the requirements of the ordinance, I can answer any questions you have.
Okay, and the applicant is present this evening, any additional information you'd like to share with the commission?
Um, not at this time, nope, I believe you covered everything.
Okay, thank you, and at this time, we'll open the public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak for or against Agenda Item 4C? Okay, recognizing no one took advantage of the opportunity to speak during the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing, we're moving on to discussion. So any questions from the commission to the city staff or the applicant?
Can, can just a general overview of the operations of the site be, be provided, how many trucks? What kind of traffic is gonna be coming out of it every day, how much is going east, how much is going west?
Yeah, so this is Dave Crystal from ARCO again, this is currently planned to be a speculative truck terminal, so it's a little bit unknown with respect to what kind of tenant is gonna come in, but we have a good idea, and I don't know the particulars of the traffic study to that detail yet. But I, I think in that traffic impact study, most of the traffic will be funneled to Westport going east from my understanding. This is the city engineer, yes, that's, that's what the traffic study showed. Traffic study also showed that there, a signal would be warranted at that intersection. So the plans have been reviewed for that Westport and Harmon to be signalized right there. A lot of it had to do with site distance, but another, another portion of it was the amount of background traffic, it would be coming around that corner on Westport, and then to have a truck that may be coming off of a stop, turning right, it may the, the traffic signal was warranted there.
And considering the airport, Alliance Airport Overlay, has all of the requirements of that overlay been considered and identified as being met through the submission?
For review of the site plan package, yes, and I believe this one would, had at least had a cursory review by the former planning director prior to coming through my office.
And the Hillwood, or the, whoever is managing the Alliance Airport Overlay, they've reviewed this as well?
That I'm not aware of, if they have to review something in the Alliance Airport Overlay.
Is it subject to any of the, the Hillwood Development Guidelines, or what, what used to be in a, in a place over there, I don't know if this property is governed by any of that or not?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So are, are there any restrictions on the type of things that can be done there, like truck washing or truck maintenance? Based on the, the permitted uses?
This, this is Dave Crystal again with ARCO, we've looked into that with the building commissioner, and we don't believe so. Right now, our site plan contemplates a, again, speculative fueling component to it, and we would expect to maintain all the required setbacks and regulations set out in the ordinance for that.
Okay, so Mr. Morrison, can you, can you tell me, is truck washing permitted, is a permitted use here?
I, I'm looking that up real quick as, as we.
So, so there's a couple of uses that are, are gonna lead to some other questions if they're permitted, so truck washing, fueling station, or maintenance facilities?
Hey. Greg, this is Paul, just fill me in, I guess I'm still trying to get my arms around what the city looks at when we look at this, but I mean, looking at this building, I mean, I see one warehouse-type structure with an office in front and a standalone building out on the, I guess it'd be the northwest side. And that's it, I don't see any fueling facility or truck washing rack or anything out there. So is this just, I mean, it's an architectural rendering. But I expect that would.
My question comes in because if, if truck washing, fueling, or maintenance are permitted, this, the stormwater containment and the, you know, the potential contaminants that would be in that stormwater runoff, is it properly protected before it goes into the creeks and other waterways?
It would have to be.
Yeah, this, so this is, you know, this is a, got the stormwater and the storm, the drainage plan included. But if those other uses are permitted, you know, that could potentially lead to some contaminants, and I'm, so I'm curious, what, what are the permitted uses on this? And have, have those used, considered in the stormwater plan?
As, as I'm looking that answer up, and I apologize, not knowing that off the top of my head, but the, to, probably you're concerned more would be that the site plan that's before you today, this is what's going to be tied to any building permit activity. And so if the truck washing bays and the fueling center is not shown on the site plan, then they wouldn't be permitted in the first place. The second step that would be, what you were just talking about, is your stormwater protection plan that would be required as part of the site plan package. Again, if it's not shown here today, then it wouldn't be included in, in the activities that they're proposing at this point in time. Any changes in activities would require a revised site plan to come back before you and the city council.
So have they identified what the use of that standalone, smaller facility or building structure is?
The intention of that building would be for fuel and maintenance, and just to further shed some light on that, we, we do have full building plans that have been ready to submit. We've held off on those because to date, we've just submitted all of the civil plans that we have available and the traffic signal plans for the sake of this meeting. We do have a fuel interceptor and separator proposed on the plumbing plans, and actually, if you look on the, the site plan for the civil drawings, that, that triple basin separator is shown in the background on the utility plants.
Is that in the exhibits that we received and are looking at this evening, I was trying to find.
Correct, yeah, it is.
There's a lot of technical stuff that's way over my head, and I was just trying to make the best sense of what I, what I know here.
Yeah, that was a lot of information, I apologize, let me see which sheet it's on. I'm trying to access that right now.
So is, is maintenance and fueling, is that a permitted use in that area?
It is, from, from the research in the ordinance that we did early on, that is a permitted use for I Industrial.
Mr. Anasio and Mr. Morrison, you concur?
I'm looking up one thing real quick if I can.
Sure, please take your time.
I believe that is accurate, I apologize for the delay. Would be.
Would be.
So is this on the, are these, is this inside the granite inlets and the curb inlets and safety and treatment? Is that on that exhibit, SD1?
So if you keep scrolling, you're actually almost, you're almost there, it looks like. Having a little bit of technology problems on mine, but if you keep scrolling, it, it's two more sheets maybe down the way.
Okay.
So there's the full site plan. And then here is the, here, if you look, if you kind of zoom in on the, oh, I'm sorry. This is the grading plan. If you keep going two more sheets down, you should see it.
What, what sheet?
If I go two sheets down, it's got the precast manhole and the cast-in-place manholes. And drop manholes. Did I go too far?
I'm trying to get a sheet number for you guys. Sorry about this.
What are you, Greg? What sheet?
That, that was SS1.
SF?
SS, Sam Sam 1.
I'm not finding. How far down is that?
That's way down. There's page 60 of the PDF. And then I get into the sanitary sewer. And the water connection's below that. And then the fire hydrants and is below that.
Yep. So it would be in those utility plans. Keep. I'm sorry, you went too, a little bit too far. Scroll, scroll up a couple. I'm, I'm, I hit this on my phone, so I, I do apologize.
I'm sorry. Chair, did you want it on page 60? You said you're looking at page 60. Do I need to show that or do I need to go back up?
Well, I, I would say just hold on one second till we get the right document number. Bouncing, I'm, I'm looking at it.
Mr. Chair, just answered your question. Confirm the answer on the permitted use? Yes, those will be permitted uses in industrial.
Okay, sorry. I'm on page C 3.1, which is the detailed utility plan of the west side of the site. So if you zoom in, yep, if you, if you're, if you have the ability to zoom in just south of that, just south of the maintenance, the proposed maintenance and fueling building, there is a square with two circles in the middle of it. It's actually not labeled on here because it's probably labeled on the plumbing pan, plans, but that is the fuel interceptor and oil separator. That'll be underground.
Do you see that? Is there a drawing that shows that?
Um, I, like I said, I don't think there's a detail on these plans. Those would be on the plumbing plans, which we'd be happy to submit if you guys like to see detail of that.
So Mr. Morrison, would you like to see those to understand what the, you know, what controls we're going to have in place? Before we make a motion on this, or are you comfortable that there's, that we could look at that before we went to city council and determine whether or not it meets the requirements?
I mean, keep in mind typically you're going to, when you get into that kind of detail, like you said, it's going to be on the mechanical plumbing, electrical plans. Those are typically not a part of a site plan review. So that's going to be during the building permit stage.
Okay. Just want to make sure as we're looking at some permitted uses and, and you know, the, all of the information that we're looking at here, that there's, there's not a disconnect.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with the set of plans that we have here today, given the fact that our staff has already reviewed it and they're still going to be, even after this approval, there will still be a building permit review process.
Okay. All right. My other question is around the lighting. So am I correct in seeing that the, the light poles in this plan are 27 feet maximum height? I think this is in the very last exhibit. Maybe it's the very last exhibit.
That is correct. Yeah, the last plan is the site photometrics.
Yeah. And, and is each one of these fixtures casting 38,000 lumens? Oh, well, is each light pole with two, two lamps casting 38,000 lumens?
That is correct.
36,000 lumens?
That is correct. Yep. 36,564 lumens.
And are they motion activated or are they?
I'm, I'm sorry. That is, that is combined with two fixtures. So each fixture is actually only 18,000 lumens, but the poles that have two of them. Yeah, the ones, some of them are single, uh, single fixture poles, but the ones that have double are 36,000.
And are they motion activated or are they always on?
So those will be on a time clock. So they will be, they'll be on a, they, they will go on.
On the property of these lamps are going to be burning and lighten up the northern part of Hasslet.
So these are all.
So it can be reflective light.
No, no, we looked into that. We made sure there was not going to be any light pollution or light spillage outside of our property limits. And maybe that's not clear on the photometrics, but we have contemplated that.
And, Mr. Morrison, I can't remember in our ordinance as if there's a maximum lumen rating that somebody's allowed to put on their property. I know that we have information about not spilling over onto, you know, off the property boundaries, but that just seems like, and given the number of fixtures, that seems like a tremendous amount of light.
Travis, are you aware of the, the light ordinance? Are you familiar with that?
I'm not aware of a maximum lumen, but I, I do know where it does say that the light can't spill over the, the property line.
Yeah. And, and this is going to be concrete surface too. So it's going to be reflective property that, off of that concrete. So that it, even though it's all downcast, it's still going to be reflected. And there's no, there would be no consideration of making these motion-activated lamps in the, in the drop lot? I mean, the building ones make sense. Keep it, you know, you don't want to protect, you want to have good security in the building, but is there any consideration for motion-activated lamps on the, in the parking area for the trailers?
These, these fixtures actually do have the capability of being motion-sensitive. So if that was a big sticking point, we could certainly invest to get more into that.
I think that would be, that would be advantageous, I think. Only from a utility standpoint, but just from a, yeah, impact on the neighboring community. All right. I don't have any other questions. I don't want to find out if there's any questions.
One more about traffic. Who bears the cost of the traffic signal that needs to be put in at Westport?
The initial cost is the developer's cost, maintenance operations would be on to the city.
All right, thank you.
Hey Travis, this is Paul Wallach. So that intersection is not really too far from Intermodal and all, are those, those two intersections going to be coordinated to kind of control traffic throw, flow through there? So you have, you know, a, a better flow of traffic? You don't have somebody stopping at Intermodal, heading east and then stopping again at Harmon and, and then heading toward the freeway?
So far, only the signal design plans have been reviewed. There will be a signal timing study that's submitted with, with the billing permit that will be able to take into account that other signal. And then ultimately, there'll probably be a citywide timing study done at some point.
Yeah, but, but considering the, the traffic there, you know, all of that truck traffic, that would just make sense. Otherwise, there'd be a lot of stopping and starting of eighteen-wheelers along there. Especially if there's a line of them at Intermodal. Or going west for that.
Is there a left turn lane planned or extending that left turn lane or anything?
No, there's no plans to extend that left turn lane, but there, there's, TIA had recommendations in it and will, we're controlled on either end, except for Intermodal, we're controlled on either end with text dot lights. So that, that will be taken into account.
So is there something we should include in our motion about that or not?
I don't think it's necessary because that's just part of the process of putting in a signal that you have to do a timing study.
And if road improvements were necessary there, that would come up at that point in time?
The TIA did not suggest a longer turn lane right there. Or, or an acceleration lane for that matter on, on the right-hand turn on to Westport from Harmon. So that, they, they looked at both those scenarios in that traffic impact analysis.
Is that because they didn't have a target business here with, with true number of vehicle trips? It's a speculative building or was there a reason they didn't come up with a rec, a, or, or an opinion that, that potentially needed to be expanded?
Yes, their TIA was based on a similar operation that this same, same company has, I believe, out of the Chicago area, if I remember right, when they were going through DRC. And they had knowledge of what the actual truck traffic was going to be and they put those numbers. They used the background traffic from the Hassle Parkway study. We had all those traffic numbers done for that. So that, that's where the TIA used.
So this is Paul again. So westbound, it's the, access to this plant is off of Harmon or this facility. The, the westbound left turning lane to turn south. How many trucks can stack in that turning lane now to where they won't be out into the lane of traffic heading west?
They've got stacking on here. They do, that, that's, that turn lane matches the other turn lanes, I believe, along Westport, including ones that were just approved for the Westport CT project. I believe there's 200-footage stacking, 160-foot of, of, so that's four trucks, three, three trucks, four trucks?
200 feet is really only about.
Right, yeah.
Two and a half, three trucks. That time your space and.
So traders are 53 feet long. Yeah, you, there's a real stacking problem sometimes turning into Amazon there, but that may, I don't know. There's a real problem there.
That's, but that's unrelated to, because that's related to where their guard shack is placed. Too close to the roads. That's why their stacking ends up back on, on to Westport.
Which actually, there is, there's a depicted guard shack in this drawing too that is, yeah, I can't tell exactly how far, but it's probably about three trucks into, into the property line. Is, is there a right turn lane planned into the property off of Harmon?
Yeah, that looks like it's good ways in though.
Yeah, it's probably about three trucks deep, but that doesn't mean not going to stack on Harmon. So there's a right turn lane there?
There's not a right turn lane there, but they are expanding. So if there was a truck turning onto Harmon, you wouldn't necessarily be stuck there. You can, you can still go, look on sheet 46 of the packet that depicts the width of Harmon Road right there.
Okay.
Sheet 46.
It's like every turn you go through in Hasslet now, you're just stacked behind truck after truck after truck. This just seems like one more opportunity for us to get stuck behind trucks. And, and I mean, I mean, the business that relies on trucking, so I value it. But we just need to, need to help minimize its impact on our residential or commercial traffic.
Well, let me ask my first question again here. I understand this is speculative, but when you design something like this, you must anticipate some sort of traffic that goes in and out of this place. Do you have no estimates that you can provide us on traffic?
We, we do. And, and that was included in the traffic impact study. It's based on the number of doors that are shown in the truck terminal. And I will say, you guys bring up Amazon. Typically, these tenants are not as truck-heavy as someone like Amazon. They're, they're kind of at the other end of the spectrum in our experience in the industrial world. They have those beehive facilities that just funnel truck traffic in and out. These are, these are predominantly more for truck parking and quick transferring of loads. So the LTL facilities are less than loads. You guys actually have one just up the road for SIA. It would operate similar to that one.
Okay, can you, can you give me a number of trucks per day?
Off the top of my head, I cannot, but we should have had our traffic consultant on this call. I apologize.
Hey, can you, can you folks hear me? This is JD Salazar.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I represent the developer. I actually am part of the development group. And the, the traffic study numbers are based on a similar-sized freight terminal that we own in Bolingbrook, Illinois, which is in the I-55 corridor, which is one of the more industrially heavily developed corridors in the last 20 years in, in all of the United States. And the numbers that we provided, this, the, the traffic study consultant are based on a similar-sized terminal that we have in that market. And so whatever results that they produced are, are based on, on those numbers. And I can tell you guys that our terminal, which is occupied by YRC Freight, which is one of the two or three largest freight companies in the country. They typically, they operate seven days a week. They typically load their trucks overnight. And the drivers come in, they pick up their, their load and they're out by seven, eight o'clock in the morning. All the trucks are gone. They all come back between two and five o'clock in the afternoon and then the process starts all over again. So this building is designed not to warehouse, not to do anything but transfer freight from one truck to another and then deliver it either to a warehouse in the area or to retail stores. So the, the numbers that we gave the traffic consultant are legitimate and really, really good numbers. So their results are not based on projections that we're not familiar with.
And how many door terminal is being depicted here? Is it about 70 doors, 80 doors?
No, sir. I think the plan that you have and David, you chime in. I believe the, the plan that you have in front of you now is somewhere around 100 doors.
100 vehicle trips in and out of every morning, every afternoon?
And it's probably a little more than that. I would say it's more between 100 and. And it's probably a little more than that. I would say it's more between 100 and 130 doors, 100, 130 trips in, trips out every day.
I can tell you what the TIA says. I've just got it opened up here now. So the trip generation is based on their Joliet facility and also through the IT land use code. And their maximum trips daily are 200 in, 200 out of trucks and 180 in and 180 out of passenger vehicles. So that's what they looked at and distributing that onto the network. And like I said, that's what, that's what kicked the, this traffic signal warrant off.
Yeah, well, that's even more robust than I, I thought.
Is, is truck traffic permitted to turn right out of this property onto Harmon Road or is that restricted based on the build structure of that road?
I do not, I don't believe that portion of Harmon, anywhere along Harmon is designated as a truck route. So we would sign it, no trucks, you know, and that could be a requirement through the site plan that a sign be placed that, that says no right turn, you know, trucks, no right turn. Yeah, fortunately, if you, if you're looking at the zoomed out map, going down Harmon Road would not be where a trucker would want to end up. It'd be a long way to the interstate.
No, but knowing what happens on 35, they could use it as a bypass. And then the next thing you know, we got you know, an endless line of trucks scooting through the eastern boundary of Hasslet.
Well, when Hasslet Parkway is there, wouldn't that be a logical way to go out? Doesn't Harmon intersect with Hasslet Parkway?
At the time, that road's improved to support that, but at the current construction of that road, it's not designed for that type of truck traffic.
Yeah, but it's tempting is my point. It's gonna be tempting.
Oh yeah, that's why you see cars doing that all the time. They jump off the freeway and go up the road to bypass the standstill.
Hasslet Parkway west of Intermodal is yet not designed for truck traffic at all. So you would have to prohibit those guys turning south out of that traffic onto Harmon. I mean, it's not designed for that. Hasslet Parkway to the east of Intermodal is, is truck traffic.
All right. So there's been a lot of conversation about traffic impacts and everything. So, you know, we, we already got a congestion problem at Westport Parkway and 35. And now we've got a traffic light going on a Westport Parkway and we're going to be stacking trucks there to turn left. And none of this suggests that there needs to be any improvements to any of that infrastructure over there?
Westport Parkway at I-35 is currently being redesigned and with the 353C expansion, there's actually construction work going on there now. So that intersection, which is currently a failed intersection, it should get better. The area is growing very quickly and traffic is being generated from uses outside of Hasslet and understand that's a concern, but we're, we're with the, with the signal warrant and the reconstruction of Harmon Road, I think this development puts forward its best effort to, to address that.
Okay. And I know the, this developer cannot be held accountable. Those are other problems that exist and I understand that as well. Okay. Any other questions, comments, thoughts, concerns?
Well, just, I guess we did talk about it. Travis, looking at civil drawings for I guess, one, two, and three. So you're coming off of on four three, coming off of Westport and turning south. So that's a single lane, one lane going south. And you have the, the left turn lane, the right turn lane heading to the north. And then that continues just ones of, my gosh, I mean, if you get 200 truck, I mean, I just, I can see Harmon getting really plugged up to there with trucks trying to turn right into that driveway. And then that guard shack, just eventually, I don't know, with that many trucks. It's a lot of trucks without any improvement to Harmon there other than a, I call it a suicide lane. And, and then a left turn lane down at the end, left turn, right turn down on the north end. So
You gotta check. You just made a great point. I'm sorry, I cut you off. Go ahead. Keep going.
No, you go.
Well, I was gonna say the, the guard shack, you indicated that, then speaking, the applicant indicated that there's roughly 200 vehicle trips coming in and out of there twice a day. So 200 vehicles got to be checked through that gate in a two or, you know, that most three hour window of time. That's a lot of vehicles to go through that gate in that short window of time for, for roughly three trucks queued off the street.
Yep.
Hey guys. So Greg, this is JD Salazar again with the developer. Most of our tenants don't need a guard shack. So I am happy to delete the guard shack from any of our, our, the, the current site plan that's, that's being approved. If you want to make that a part of your motion, I'm all for it. We don't need it.
So just make it an open gate?
Yes, sir. Actually, it's not an open gate, won't be an open gate, but there will be actually, no, I take that back. We, we don't need the guard shack. This is going to be a one tenant facility. And we don't need it. We don't currently have that in Chicago. We don't have that in Miami on, on our yard there. So please include that in your motion, just to delete the guard shack.
Okay. And, and we can, in our motion, we can say that the applicant supports that recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That really does alleviate one of my concerns.
Yeah, I, I totally get it. Nobody wants trucks stacking on Harmon Road. And, and we don't want that either. I mean, there's major safety issues there.
Well, they're gonna stack on Harmon. Even if you're doing that, just slowing down, turn it in. There's, you know, because there's a subdivision further to the south, a new one. And there's got, you know, there's bound to be a lot of people that are now turning south on Harmon and heading down to I forget, not La Terra, the name of the subdivision down there.
Callaway. Or not, Caraway.
Yeah, Caraway, yeah, down at Caraway. So I can imagine if you have 15 trucks in that one lane of traffic heading south on Harmon, they're not going to be real happy with that.
You know, guys, the Alliance, the Alliance development is an industrial development full of trucks and traffic. I, I don't know what we can do. We're, we're following every requirement that, that we we want to and have to require to, to follow in your community. And so we're, we're happy to do whatever you guys want us to do, but we can't alleviate truck traffic in Alliance. It is what it is.
No, but could you put a right turn lane?
We're already putting in another lane. There are three lanes in front of our develop.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's three lines, you know, there's not going to be a left turn into your property because there's not truck per traffic permitted on that part of the road anyway. So I, I think there's probably a viable way for people to get around those trucks.
Okay.
Seems like, seems like it anyways.
And we are, we're, we're open, Greg and, and Paul, we're open to whatever kind of signage or you know, other methods for keeping drivers from going, but you can't get people to do what, what they're going to do anyway, but there's no reason for drivers to go south on Harmon Road. I, I will tell you the metrics for transportation today are all about efficiency and timing. And you're not going to get a driver that goes south on Harmon when he can wait in traffic and get back on I-35W or take another route going east. It just, it won't make any sense there. Guys like that don't keep their jobs.
I, I agree with you on that. I don't see anybody turning south out of the facility on Harmon. It's just people coming off of Westport trying to get down to Caraway. And there's one lane of traffic going south until you get to the center lane that you put there. And that's really not a travel lane. That's a, that's a turn lane. It's supposed to be, but
Yeah, and you know, Paul, let me just kind of, and again, I'm just giving you my experience as having been in the transportation, real estate industry for 30 years. The, the, the trucks don't all get back to the yard at the same time. They're going to be spaced out. If we do away with the guard shack, that there's not going to be a spacing problem. The trucks will be able to just flow naturally from Harmon Road in, into the property. And there, there should be, unless, unless something really goes bad, there won't be any stacking on, on Harmon Road. They'll just be able to turn right into the property and do what they need to do.
And as an industrial space operator, I would agree with that. As long as there's an open gate, that shouldn't be, shouldn't be a stacking problem.
That's correct. And that's also contemplated in the traffic impact study. They look at the peak hours in the AM and the PM.
Okay, are there any other discussion points? All right. So I, there were three main things that I heard that we said we, we wanted to include in the motion that the first one was around the lamp posts, that they would be motion activated so that we minimize the amount of time that the lights are on. The second one was the applicant supporter removal, the guard shack, so traffic could flow directly into the yard and not stack. And the third item was that we would restrict traffic so that there would be no right turn out of the truck court onto Harmon Road. Those are the three things that, that I made notes about. Anybody other capture anything else in their notes that we needed to include? If we make a motion to approve? Okay, would somebody like to make the motion or I would be happy to do that?
Why don't you do it? Grab the notes.
Okay. All right. I make a motion, this is Greg Caddis speaking. I make a motion, we recommend approval of the site plan package for lot one, R1, block A, Messiah Valley Transportation subdivision with the following conditions. One, that all lamp posts throughout the truck court area that are the 27 foot high light poles with the double fixtures be, be motion activated to minimize the amount of time that the lights are on. Second, that the guard shack is removed from the site plan as recommended by the applicant. And the third is that there would be restricted traffic flow to the southbound, southbound onto Harmon Road so that no trucks were to turn right off of the property. There's a motion made. Is there a second?
This is Jim Arcason. I'll second it.
Motion made, most seconded. Mr. Mr. Wallach.
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Dennis?
Approved.
And Greg is an I as well. The motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your, the discussion and your input and your flexibility on a few of those items.
Thank you very much. We're looking, we're being, being a very good corporate citizen of Hasslet.
Okay, moving on to agenda item five, executive session we don't need. Item six, we don't need as well. Let's consider that any action from the executive session. Number seven, future agenda items. So do we, do we know that we have anything on the agenda for next month?
I do believe that we will have two site plan amendments that are coming through the process right now.
Okay, so it looks like we'll definitely have stuff for a meeting. And we, we still have the December meeting date, which is going to be mid-December, right, Diana? So that's going to be December 15th, and then we have our CIAC meeting that's going to be part of our November meeting, which is on the 16th of November. Right?
Yes, so those dates are correct.
Okay. All right. And let's see, we did not get Doreen or Brian to join us today, so we don't need to go back to agenda item two, do we?
No, sir, that's correct.
Okay, I believe we are done with our meetings.
On, on 8A. So P and Z is at 6:45, Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. Do we, are we part of that or do we come in at 6:30 or 6:45?
So if you're a regular member on the, on the Planning and zoning commission, you are, you are on the CIAC.
We are. Okay, so 6:30 on the I'm learning all of this. Okay, very good.
Been here about, I've been here about 14 years and I'm still learning.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
It might be a lot longer than that. I don't know. All right. So I think we're done. So we will adjourn. The time is 7:36 PM. Thank you, everybody for attending.
Good night.